Call to order the common council meeting for Monday, August 4th, 2025. Roll call, please. Let the record reflect the quorum is present and the gentleman from the ninth and the lady from the twelfth are excused. Please stand for a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance. Approval of the minutes of the meeting held July 9th and July 21st, 2025. It's been moved and seconded to approve. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Citizens comments. Tom Sparonis.
Need your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Tom Sparonis, 2828 Crosswinds Drive, Mount Pleasant. Okay, I'm here to address my property on 7839 Sheridan Road, the Home Run Restaurant, Tommy's. And next door there's a ballpark, Simmons Field, everybody knows. And early last year, a nut fell down, totaled one of my employees' cars. And since then, they haven't put anything back up. So I've addressed it, I've called everybody, sent letters. People say they're getting bids. So far, I've got seven broken windshield just for my employees. My daughter walked out before the last game. A ball came between her and the arm of the door and almost hit her in the head. And the owner of the Kingfish said you could keep the ball. And I'm just asking the council because they still have the net. I don't know who to talk to. Put the two poles up, stretch the net out. It was there for 34 years. We didn't have this problem. And I don't know, all of a sudden, we're getting bids, we're getting this, we're getting that. We put telephone poles all over the place, you know what I mean? It can't be that big of a deal. And use the existing net and just, I don't know, rectify the problem. I feel like I try to be a good neighbor. And I guess the city owns the park because they say we don't own it, we're not doing it. So I'm asking you guys, please, be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's it. Please continue.
B Communications, petitions, reports of departments. B1, approval of the following applications per list on file in the office of the city clerk. A25 operators licenses. B8 special class B beer and/or special class B wine licenses. C1 taxi driver license.
Gentlemen from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve B1.
Moving second to approve item B1. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
B2, conditional use permit for a tattoo establishment located at 5741 75th Street.
Gentlemen from the 3rd.
I move to concur with the recommendation from City Plan, but I think this is open to a public hearing.
Moving and seconded to approve item B2. At this time, open it up to a public hearing as it's stated and as I'm reading. Anyone here to speak on item B2, please come forward, state your name and address.
Amy Walden. I am co-owner of Peach Toad Tattoo. I'm here just to answer any questions that you guys have on behalf of myself and Rihanna White, my business partner.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? If not, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is approval of item B2 to concur. That's with approval of item B2. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
C, recommendations from the Committee on Licenses and Permits. C1, application for new operators licenses. A Nicole Costa 30. B Jada Mendez 10. C Christopher Moore 30. D Ronnie Orr 95.
Gentlemen from the 10th.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to concur with the recommendation of license and permit.
Moving second to concur on item C1. At this time, open it up to a hearing. Anyone here to speak on item C1, please come forward, state your name and address.
Oh, my name is Nicola Costa. I live in 8600 Sheridan Road, and I'm just here to answer any questions or clarify anything.
Thank you. If there are, we'll call you back up. If there are any questions, we'll call you back up.
Hi, my name is Christopher Moore. I'm here in behalf of Prestige Worldwide, and I'm here to answer any questions. My address is 4210 80th Street. So if you guys have any questions, just let me know.
If there are, we'll call you back up.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on C1? Anyone else? Anyone else? If not, seeing none, close the hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrents. Any discussion? Lady from the 4th.
I'd like to split my vote on this one. I'd like to vote.
Is there a motion? Would you like to make a motion to separate?
Yes, please. I'd like to separate our D.
Okay. Gentlemen from the 10th, you want to make a motion on A, B, and C?
I make a motion to concur with the recommendation of license and permit on A, B, C, and D. All right, A, B, and C.
Okay, thank you. And it's seconded? Okay. Motion on the floor is concurrents on A, B, and C. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Gentlemen from the 10th on...
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, concur with the recommendation of license and permit on C1D.
Okay. Is there a second? Moving and second to concur on item C1D. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
C2, application of Brandy Jones for a new operator's license.
Gentlemen from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve C2 through C6 after being read. Any necessary applicant hearings?
C3, applications for a temporary outdoor extension of the class B beer, class B liquor license with no adverse recommendations from the police department. A Swedish-American club located at 7002 30th Avenue for an event on September 20th, 2025. B The Port LLC located at 714 50th Street for an event on September 14th, 2025. C The Port LLC located at 714 50th Street for an event on October 11th, 2025. D Airbnb Beer LLC located at 621 56th Street for an event on August 25th, 2025 with a waiver request of 10.075 D3 by the Common Council under 10.075I and a request for Common Council to waive the fence requirement of subsection D3 of the ordinance. E Airbnb Beer LLC located at 621 56th Street for an event on August 30th, 2025 with a waiver request of 10.075D3 by the Common Council under 10.075I and a request for Common Council to waive the fence requirement of subsection D3 of the ordinance. C4, application of TNT's Patio Pub LLC for a daily cabaret license located at 5022 7th Avenue for an event to be held on August 30th, 2025 with no adverse recommendations from the police department. C5, application of BC Tavern of Kenosha Inc. for a yearly cabaret license located at 4626 Sheridan Road with no adverse recommendations from the police department. C6, applications of Hat Tricks LLC located at 2425 60th Street with no adverse recommendations from the police department. A new class B beer, class B liquor license upon surrender of a similar license from Tracy Peterson. B probationary cabaret license. C permanent outdoor extension with a request to extend the closing time to 1:30 a.m.
Okay, at this time, open up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on C2, 3, 4, 5, or 6? Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm C2. I'm Brandy Jones. I live at 5114 25th Avenue here in Kenosha, 53140. So I'm here for any questions that you guys have for me.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Peterson. I am at 2425 60th Street, and I am C6, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Kevin Rash, 3922 59th Street, and I'm here to answer any questions for BC Tavern.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else on C2, 3, 4, 5, or 6? Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrents. Gentlemen from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment in reference to C6. The alderperson of the district isn't here, but she did have some concerns, threw the chair to the applicant. Ms. Peterson, at license and permit, when I asked you questions in reference to the neighbor, is that correct?
Yes.
And alderperson Dyson's concern was, did you speak to the neighbor, Mr. Aguilar?
Yes.
And you said you did, correct? And that was her concern. She's in support as long as they spoke to the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
G Ordinance is second reading. G1 ordinance by the Public Safety and Welfare Committee to repeal and recreate section 3.23 regarding automatic fire sprinkler systems.
Gentlemen from the 5th.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to approve, and I'd like the chief of, fire chief to state why we're doing this.
It's been moved and seconded to concur with public safety and welfare?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, open up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on item G1? Anyone here to speak on G1? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Motion on floor is approval or concurrents? And we're getting there. You guys are doing the same thing. One and the same. Chief.
Okay, good evening. This is a rewrite of the City of Kenosha ordinance on sprinklers to align with the State of Wisconsin ordinance. As it is written, any change in the future would also align our ordinance with the changes at the state level. So this is a requirement, and that's why we are moving to this rewrite.
Thank you. Gentlemen from the 5th, you still have the floor, sir?
I'm done. I'm fine. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Any other alderpersons? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is concurrents? All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries 15 to 0. H zoning ordinance is second reading. H1, rezoning ordinance by the City Plan Commission to rezone the properties at 1822 53rd Street and 1710 53rd Street from IP Institutional Park District to RG2 General Residential District.
Gentlemen from the 3rd.
Thank you. I move to approve H1 as recommended by the City Plan Commission after public hearing.
Thank you, sir. It's been moved and seconded to concur with City Plan Commission. At this time, open up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on item H1? Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrents? Is that correct, Mr. President? Approval of item H1. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries 15 to 0. I resolutions. I1, resolutions by the Committee on Finance to levy special charges. A boarding and securing $425. B trash and debris removal $2,572.40. C grass and weed cutting $8,999.19. D property maintenance reinspection fees $10,808. E building and zoning reinspection fees $650. Finance recommended to approve 4 to 0.
Gentlemen from the 13th.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to concur with the Finance Committee recommendations on I1 and I2 after being read. Second. And any hearings?
I2, resolution by the Finance Committee to impose a special charge on certain parcels of property for bulk trash removal. Finance recommended to approve 4 to 0.
Okay, at this time, open up to a hearing. Anyone here to speak on item I1? Please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrents with finance on I1 and I2? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries 15 to 0. I3, resolution by the Finance Committee to amend the City of Kenosha Capital Improvement Program for 2025 by increasing OT 18-003 Strawberry Creek subdivision improvements in the amount of $50,000 and decreasing IN 21-004 16th Avenue, Washington Road, 40th Street in the amount of $50,000 for a change in the 2025 CIP of 0. Finance recommended to approve 4 to 0.
Gentlemen from the 13th.
I move to concur with the Finance Committee recommendations on I3 through I5 after being read.
I4, resolution by the Finance Committee to amend the City of Kenosha Capital Improvement Program for 2025 by creating OT 25-003 Keela Parking Lot in tid number 32 in the amount of $291,000 for an increase in the 2025 CIP of $291,000. Finance recommended to approve 4 to 0. I5, resolution by the mayor to authorize the transfer of ownership of four parcels from the City of Kenosha to Torres and Builders and Properties LLC. Finance recommended to approve 4 to 0.
Okay, motion on the floor is concurrents on I3, 4, and 5. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries 15 to 0. I6, resolution by the Committee on Public Works to vacate a portion of 16th Avenue between 60th Street and 62nd Street.
Gentlemen from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to concur with the findings of approval for item I6.
Seconded.
Okay. We have, is that reflected on the...? Thank you. Okay, at this time, open up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on item I6? Please come forward, state your name and address. Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is concurrents? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries 15 to 0. I7, resolution by the mayor to amend the official map for the City of Kenosha, Wisconsin to include as additional right-of-way various tax parcels and parts thereof located on 16th Avenue from 60th Street to 63rd Street.
Gentlemen from the 3rd.
Thank you. Move to approve the resolution, I7. This is related to I6, and it has been, the city did a very good job with this street.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item I7. At this time, open up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on item I7? Anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Motion on the floor is approval of item I7. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Pizala. Motion carries 15 to 0. I8, resolution by principal sponsor alderperson Dominic Ruffalo. Co-sponsors alderperson Jack Rolls, alderperson Bill Seal, and alderperson Kenny Harper. Recently added alderperson Kurt Wilson to declare the month of September 2025 recovery month.
Gentlemen from the 16th.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to approve item I8. Gentlemen, do you have any comments? There's a number of folks with lights on. Was there any comments you wanted to make on that?
Yes. If there's other people that want to sign up on this resolution, they're more than welcome. The reason I brought this up is to make September recovery month. There may or may not be a member on the council who's been in recovery for decades now. The main reason for this is hope. There is hope out there. Anybody who's suffering from alcoholism, drug abuse, mental illness, there is hope, and there is a better life available. I know many, I know thousands of people in recovery, and they're fine citizens of Kenosha and the world. If anybody needs help, my number is listed on the city's website. I could direct them into, to help. I'm not going to give my number out on the floor here, but it's on the city website. So there is hope, and there's a better life for it. So alcoholism, drug abuse affects every family. It takes hostages. It's not just the person involved, it's the family, it's the citizens, it's the Kenosha Police Department, Kenosha Fire Department, you know. They take hostages. So this is for a hope, and there is a better life. So hopefully it gets approved, and I'm sure it will. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen from the 3rd.
Thank you. With the sponsors' approval, I would request to be added as the co-sponsor.
Okay, gentlemen from the 11th.
I'd like to also be added as sponsor, co-sponsor.
Lady from the 8th.
I also would like to be added. Thank you.
Lady from the 4th.
Thank you, Your Honor. With the sponsors' permission, I'd also like to be added. And I would like to add, my husband and I are very open about this. We've both been in recovery for more than 20 years, and largely thanks to the Kenosha Eleanor Club here in for more than 20 years, and largely thanks to the Kenosha LNO Club here in Kenosha. So I would love to plug them. If you're having issues, go on down there. There are a lot of people who will help you. That's it.
Thank you. Lady from the Sixth?
With permission, I'd like to be a co-sponsor as well. Thank you.
Gentleman from the Seventh?
I also with the blessing of the sponsor to be included. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And gentleman from the Fourteenth?
I've already been included as a co-sponsor, but I just wanted to add this comment that personally I've seen friends and family members fall victim to addiction, and I think that this, this resolution is something that, like Alderperson Ruffalo said, can bring hope, can bring positivity, and can bring a change to someone's life. I've seen it all too, too close, just happen to tear families apart, and I just wish all the best for those involved, and just want to do everything in my power to create more resources so that people that don't know that we have the resources here can reach out for help, because it's available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is approval. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries fifteen to zero. J appointments, reappointments by the Mayor. J1 reappointment of Tom Vicentainer to the Kenosha Hometown Heroes Commission to a term which begins September 1, 2025 and expires August 31, 2027. J2 reappointment of Steve Tindall to the Kenosha Hometown Heroes Commission to a term which begins September 1, 2025 and expires August 31, 2027. J3 reappointment of Brad Cramlett to the Kenosha Hometown Heroes Commission to a term which begins September 1, 2025 and expires August 31, 2027.
Now that they've read, I hope there's a motion to approve J1, 2, and 3. Gentleman from the Fifteenth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve J1, J2, and J3. Thank you.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve J1, 2, and 3. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries fifteen to zero. K public construction and improvement contracts. K1 award of contract for project 24-1027 67th Street Improvements to the Lawn Contractors Inc. in the amount of $909,000.
Gentleman from the Fifteenth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to concur with the findings of public works on K1, K2, K3, and K4, as well as L1 and L2 after being read. Thank you, sir.
Second.
K2 award of contract for project 24-1255 Strawberry Creek sidewalks, ADA ramps and street trees to Forward Contractors of Wisconsin in the amount of $347,400. K3 award of contract for project 25-1010 Epoxy Pavement Markings to Century Traffic LLC in the amount of $95,000. K4 award of contract for project 25-1624 Emerging Leaders West and East Parking Lot to the Lawn Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $651,000. L other contracts and agreements. L1 quitclaim deed dedicating various city-owned property on 16th Avenue between 60th Street to 62nd Street as right-of-way. L2 quitclaim deed dedicating various city-owned property on 16th Avenue between 62nd Street to 63rd Street as right-of-way.
Okay. Gentleman from the Third?
Thank you, Your Honor. Regarding L1 and L2, this is basically helping the city with the extension of, to 16th Street between 60th Street and 63rd Street, and this is something that everybody in the neighborhood has been very positive about. I don't know of anybody reasonable that has said that it hasn't been done well. So with that, actively encourage everybody to vote yes on this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is concurrence on K1 through L2. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries fifteen to zero. L3 First Amendment to Agreement between Torres and Builders and Properties LLC in the City of Kenosha. Finance recommended to approve four to zero.
Gentleman from the Thirteenth?
Move to concur with the Finance Committee recommendations on L3 and L4 after being read.
Second.
Moving seconded.
L4 Approval of Transfer of 620 Square Feet of 1822 53rd Street by the City of Kenosha to James Leach. Finance recommended to approve four to zero.
Okay. Any alderpersons? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is concurrence. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries fifteen to zero. M recommendations from the Committee on Finance. M1 Cabot 2024 Second Quarter Loan Report.
Gentleman from the Thirteenth?
Move to defer to the next, our next meeting.
Second.
Moving second to defer to the next meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
M2 Disbursement Record Number 14 $7,234,018.20. Finance recommended to approve four to zero.
Gentleman from the Thirteenth?
Move to concur with the Finance Committee recommendation to approve M2.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded to concur with Finance. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries fifteen to zero. N recommendations from the Committee on Public Works. N1 Acceptance of Project 24-1418 Tree Planting, which has been satisfactorily completed by Arthur Wheeler, Inc. The final amount of the contract is $77,514.
Gentleman from the Fifteenth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to concur with the recommendation to approve by Public Works for N1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item, concur on item N1. Gentleman from the Third?
Thank you. When this came before Parks, I requested from the Director if she had a figure as to what proportion of this money is covered by the citizens who have their trees replacing the parkway. I see that Mr. Nelson is here, and I'm just wondering if he has a, an approximate figure or an exact figure, that what proportion of this is covered? Because we're spending money, obviously, but I know a certain amount of, has been put forward by the citizens to get a tree in their parkway, in their lawn park. So if he has that information, I'd like to hear it.
Dirk Nelson, 38, 1252nd Avenue. Director told me today that that's approximately 5% because a lot of trees we're planting are not in residences or in boulevards and parks and other places like that.
Thank you. Are you the floor? Okay. Motion on the floor is concurrence on N1. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries fifteen to zero. P and such matters as are authorized by law or regular business. P1 Claim of State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company. Finance recommended to approve four to zero.
Gentleman from the Thirteenth?
Move to concur with the Finance Committee recommendation. On P1.
Just P1, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on item P1? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is concurrence. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Motion carries fifteen to zero. P2 Claim of State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company. Finance recommended to approve four to zero.
Gentleman from the Thirteenth?
Move to concur with the Finance Committee recommendation to approve P2.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Roll call, please.
Alderperson DeBere? Motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay. Mayor's comments. Couple upcoming items. First of all, if you recall, last year, we partnered with Abbott and the Big Ten to have blood donations. We kind of put it together kind of last minute. There is a competition that they are having, again, with all the Big Ten schools this year, and the winner, the school with the largest amount of blood donations will be receiving a million, $1 million from Abbott. Last year, if you recall, we kind of got into it late. They reached out and wanted to know if we wanted to help with that. We did. This year, they, it was very successful. Obviously, we are, we were hoping that the University of Wisconsin wins this. They came in second last year. We're hoping that starting this a little bit sooner this year, we will be able to beat the University of Nebraska this year, who actually was the one who came in first place. Aside from the million-dollar donation, which is obviously very, very nice, blood donations are down. We are a critical, critical need all across the country for that, if you recall, as in the budget that we, you all approved last year to include the ability for our fire department to have, give blood donation or drug change fusions on our EMS rigs. So not only is it important, but it's also something that you, if you do it here, the impact you will see here locally. So that is going to be kicking off. I think they, starting the program with an announcement, I think, tomorrow, but we are going to be having events throughout between now and through the course of the end, early December, when it will close out. So be more information that come out. Encourage everyone to get out and please donate blood. As I said, it's a very worthwhile cause on multiple fronts, and hopefully everybody will come out, will come out and do it. Secondly, a little bit, kind of a similar donation, but I guess a little bit more fun, if you will. The, given the current rivalry that is going on, I believe as we speak right now, and it's a lot of fun that's going on, but in the end, one of the things that we had talked about doing is, because there are, there's another need, and that is for donations to, in groups like the Shalom Center and Sharing Center. During this week, we are accepting donations from, for the Shalom Center here. They will be accepting donations for the Sharing Center. The governmental body that has the largest weight donation will win. The loser means if the, if the county wins, then I have to wear a Brewer shirt. If the city wins, then the county executive has to wear a Cub shirt. So aside from a little bit of fun, obviously there is a, an important need there. So we've got boxes set up all over here to help people make those donations. So I, obviously, at the end of the day, the winners are going to be the Shalom Center and the Sharing Center for getting, getting those needed supplies. So I would encourage all of you, regardless of your fan affiliation, to come in and drop off items. You'll see them all around City Hall. I think we, believe we, Chief, we have them at the police station, fire stations, so you can make those donations very, very easily, and hopefully everybody will come out and do that, and it'll be a fun week and a fun series. And go Cubs, go. Gentleman from the Seventeenth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a second to express my gratitude to the men and women of the KPD. When I was elected about a year and a half ago, I always wanted to do a ride-along with the police. I was in negotiations with Police Chief Patton about what is allowed and what's not allowed, and it took about, you know, a year and a half to get this finalized. But last week, he assigned me to Officer Mark Horvik for a ride-along. I thought it'd be fun and educational, and when it began with roll call, I completed an eight-hour shift. We did nine calls, including a jail tour, and I walked away with just a greater appreciation for the KPD and what their daily services are to our city and all they go through, the good and the bad. It was very eye-opening. I recommend our council members to do the same. I believe it's open to private citizens to some certain extent. Trying to negotiate another ride-along for a third shift. I think that'd be interesting other than a second shift. And then I also want to do it with the fire department as well. So just wanted to thank everyone at the Police Department for putting this together, and it was very eye-opening, and I appreciate what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gentleman from the Third?
Thank you, Your Honor. This might seem like a minor matter to some people, but it is a matter of public safety concern. We go around in our districts, and we notice that a lot of houses and buildings do not have a visible street address in front of them. Not having a street address might seem like a minor thing, but if, for some reason, somebody calls for an ambulance or police for whatever, or sometimes even the city workers coming to, and not being able to locate the property because there, there's no city address there, it doesn't, they, they do locate the property, but it, it, there's a delay. And when it comes to emergency medical services, for example, or police, this is, this delay can make a difference between somebody being here tomorrow or not being here tomorrow. This is a very important thing, and I believe we have an ordinance that mandates that these, street numbers are, you know, the, the, the house numbers have to be visible, and so many of them aren't. And this is something that, if, if it comes down to us, you know, turning people in and all that, no, I, I would rather just have people say, hey, this is a reasonable thing, so let's, let's get our, our house numbers up and visible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gentleman from the Sixteenth?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to thank everybody, all my co-sponsors for this resolution to make September recovery month, and Mr. Knight who helped me, helped me write this. People in recovery are human beings. There's a lot of negative effects of alcoholism and drug abuse in our community and in the world. So if this resolution could save one life, one family from turmoil, it's worth it. But there always is hope and change. That's the big part of this, is that you don't have to live like that anymore. There is a better way of life, so long as you have to, to want to change. It's all about change. So it, it changes many lives. So there's many places to go, but like I said, I could, I could help direct you to find, to find some sources. So I want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more lights. Motion to adjourn on your laptop would be in order? Moving second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.